First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the mailing?
Yes.
Probably not. I just set that out. So I apologize, Kyle. I could probably put it up on the screen so you could see it too.
Wasn't, oh, that was the final mailing because there was a mailing you sent last week, right?
Yeah, no, we revised that one with some of your comments from the other night. I don't think I have it out here.
Certainly not a game changer on my end, guys.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on this computer, so. We have to remote in. There's an image of the front. And the back was the most significant change. So we put those bullets in as well as the information about how to get a ballot.
Yep.
But the front, we moved the funding path, the amount of money we have and what we still need.
Yep.
I like the new bullets on why invest in this project.
She did a good job of squeezing it all in there, too. I thought it was going to be too much, but. So we need your not to exceed amount.
Can you brief these two? Sharon and Kyle on what we talked about briefly.
Yes, so I did put the email from Misty Sensigalli in there with the papers. And she is our contact for the USDA rural development loan. And her, she said, from her position, she would recommend to you that you go high. Go as much as we don't have in hand right now. But that is her recommendation. She said the program has no specifications about what your minimum bond would have to be. So it is the town's decision. You do what you feel is right and they're not going to sweat it because we're probably going to come up with more. So back to what feels best for this.
Well, I think if we put $1.7 million, this is going to fail.
I agree.
It's as simple as that.
Or anywhere near that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've, we've talked that a high of 680, I wouldn't dare go above that.
She understands that.
Kyle, what are you thinking about for a number?
Well, like you said, Sharon, I, 680 would be the absolute top end for me as well. You put a 1.7 out there and it's going to blow up.
Yep.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't go for it. I know that for 1.7.
Right.
As a taxpayer, I wouldn't move for it.
Right.
Exactly. What about the other question that was asked about if we do proceed and we can run short getting funds or whatever about, is there any penalty if we don't take the money? The question that was asked the other night by Henry.
I didn't catch all of that. So if we run short, say again, the rest?
Say, say we ask for 680. And we get, get going with the process and we don't get enough grant money to cover the rest of the, the rest. Is there any penalty for not taking that money? Is there anything we have to do if we don't use the money?
The 680,000?
No, the remainder because they're like, it's 1.7, right, that we're short?
Yep, at this time, yes.
At this time. Now, we're quite certain that there's going to be more grant money coming in, but my question is, say we put 680 on the ballot and the town says yes, well, we're a million short. If we don't get enough to cover that million dollars in, in grants, obviously the project's not going to go through or is there any penalty that the town would, would take by not using that money?
Well, we talked about the idea that you, if you don't take grant money, that you tend to fall to the bottom of the list the next time you apply.
Yep.
But I don't know if there's a financial penalty.
There, there's no penalty I'm aware of. So you're saying if we didn't come up with enough funds and we stepped away from the project, would there be a penalty?
Correct.
No, just as Sharon said, only to your reputation. Only, you know, as Tim Smith said, it could make future funders wary of you.
Yep.
There's no strength, if you canceled your grants, there's no loss to the town. And I believe if you came up short, you could put the issue back in front of voters if you needed to ask for more money. I think you would have that option, but I believe we're looking at an amount less than what you would be asking for rather than coming up short.
So what about the idea of the 20%? 680,000. Was there any thoughts as to whether or not we should stick with that number as the 20% figure so that we had our butt covered there?
Well, the beauty of that is you already know what the tax impact is. We've talked about, you know, that $60,000 number. So it's convenient at this point. That's an advantage, but I mean, that's I think it's just got to be what you think is going to work for the residents.
So this is my fault. Take it for what it is. I say we ask for the 680, but we make up our minds here now a figure that we'd actually go forward with. 680, just to cover in case it was ever an issue that we didn't bond for the 20%. But whether we make that 250,000, we're ready to go forward with 300, 400, 500. Just have an idea between us of what we're actually willing to spend on that bond vote.
I don't know if, if the voters authorized you to go forward at that amount, you might need to check with them again before you say you're not going to go forward at that amount. I don't know.
I don't throw a lot of questions in. But we're trying to make educated decisions with all the money involved.
Right.
We bond for 680. Theoretically, we only need 300. The remainder of it, can we turn that back in without penalty?
Yes, you, you've only filed, filled out applications. You haven't signed anything. So they asked you to go high. You actually asked for 993,000, knowing fully well that was way more than you would have needed. There, there's no, there's no penalty to you for not
Not using all of it.
Not using the loans or not using the loan. Everything else is a grant, so it would be a factor.
Was it on the board for the arena bond? Did something similar happen there? Did we bond high and then not use all the money or did we use all?
No, we used it all. We had a $200,000 grant. Yeah, good point.
Always pass by the very, very slim margin.
We had a $200,000 earmark from Peter Welch, actually. And so we knew going into that, we did fundraising and tried to lower it more, but it didn't much.
Well, the other thing, too, is if we were to come up short, I don't have a problem asking Jim again for money. And saying, okay, you can't do 250, we're 100,000 short.
Yep, that's a good point. And I did talk with Patrick Schau today from, from that community development program, which was the $500,000 request here that's pending. It's in limbo because we don't have a direct beneficiary. They like to work with a business. They like to know who is going to be making jobs and we don't have that. But when I talked to him about our project today, he said, when you get to the end, if you are short and it's more like 100,000 or 200,000, that's something that we could help you with to fill in a gap rather than you asking for the full request. So that's another thing to have in your back pocket. If one of our grants comes up short, we can ask them for a reduced amount to fill a gap.
That was the BCDP?
BCDP.
Which stands for?
Vermont Community Development Program. They're block grants, implementation, implementation grants. So.
And the other thing to consider is 3 million 5 is an estimate. It is not necessarily the final bid.
True.
I'd love to think we could do it for less than that. If it wasn't a federal project, I know we could do it less than that.
Yeah.
With what you just said about the BCDP, that makes me more comfortable asking for something less than 680, not much less. Something a little more powerful. Or even number.
And the EDA. They have a new program that I mentioned to you last time, 500 million. Broken out into different categories and the one that we could apply for can fund up to 80%. So I can ask for more than 1.7. I can ask for up to 80%.
80% of those, 3.5.
Yep. Yep. So that's the application now that able to work on their existing program that they had, had a cap at 50% of total project cost. So this one is a game changer. And could put us in a very different situation.
And Vtrans is an out and out commitment, right? That is not their fees in advance like we had discussed before.
That's the balance. It was a $1 million allocation.
Right.
And 200 estimate is to hook up their state buildings.
Right, but are they expecting services toward that $800,000?
Services?
Water flow? Sewage?
Well, they, you mean, no, you mean they'll be paying for it. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Like any other customer, they would have to pay for it.
I know one time they talked about helping, you know, they're fronting their
Yes, they do.
Costs.
Yeah.
In order to get.
No, that did not materialize. That is for construction.
Kyle, you're kind of quiet.
Just thinking. So what are you thinking, that 500,000 number? Or are you thinking the full 680?
I'm thinking the 500 based on what we were just told with the BCDP, being able to throw a little more at the end if we needed. And then what you just said about the EDA, that we can go 80%. So that would bring it from 1.7 up to 2.8 if we needed it. So I'm comfortable with the 500,000. I think that still shows a pretty good commitment for the town to the project. It would be lower if we needed to bond the whole thing out, would be definitely lower on the taxes than the 680. Take the nice round, even, number two, see if you're on paper. It's easier to do the math in your head.
Yeah, it's a good drop from, you know, what we've been talking about. So that's a good thing.
I would be comfortable with the 500.
Or we could do like a car dealer, go 499, 999. Make it look a little better.
It works. It works, right?
I'm okay with the 500.
Hey, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to not succeed about the airport bond vote wire we're about to put out of 500,000. So more than 500,000.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Okay.
Okay, I did do an interview with VT Digger as well on Saturday.
Really?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Gentleman that contacted my email and asked to speak with me and called on Saturday afternoon, so we talked for probably 45 minutes.
That's great.
Coming out, getting published.
I'm not really certain to be honest, but he was going to also reach out to Tim. He was going to reach out, I think, to the Coys. And so hopefully you can get a nice little rounded.
Nice. That's awesome. There's still a chance for another video if you want to join in and do a video. Tim and Sharon did one. I just sent the link out today. Amazing. It's really good. I would not say that. I wouldn't say that. I thought it was very good.
Oh, yeah, he's happy to have his back closer to the vote.
Yeah. So. Okay, be looking for that. I put a memorandum in front of you, which is a timeline. Keep in mind as we're moving forward, those are our target dates for notices, special meetings. So the meeting on August 19th, your special meeting, we have to warn for the resolution and bond vote. So we can talk about anything about that project during that meeting, then you adjourn that and you go into your regular select board meeting and that's where you should approve the resolution.
Who are still, excuse me, starting at 6:30 or are we starting early?
It probably would be better to start at 6:00 and have that half hour for the hearing. I'm glad you said that. I'll send that to you tomorrow, Kyle, so you can see it.
Thank you.
And I sorry, you're still looking at that?
That looks okay?
Yeah.
So the church got back to me today finally, and they are available to host on September 7th. And they would be willing to cook a meal. Room holds 90 people. And they said they can feed that many people for like 100 to 125 bucks. So that's a hell of a deal. And that's their, that's their expenses. So if the town wanted to give them something for their time, they could do that. But so that's pretty feasible. You can't buy pizza for that.
No, no.
There's nothing else you could do. And it's September, so we don't know what that night will be like. If it's in the arena, it could be cold, could be damp. Sounds not great. We'd have to set up all the tables and everything. So this is easy peasy, best case scenario, I think.
I think it's a good idea and you get more people.
Yeah, what are they serving?
Well, she said they could do a spaghetti dinner for 100, 125 bucks. They could do something else. I don't know. I said, what's your cheapest meal? So she said probably spaghetti. So it's kind of a, something everybody likes, you know, you're going to hit everybody with that, so. So I will start.
Chicken biscuit.
Chicken biscuits. Oh, I love that.
They do do that, too.
Yeah. Well, I can ask. I mean, that would be a hit for sure. Yeah, okay, I'll ask her.
Kyle, will you do chicken and biscuits?
You ever seen me eat anything?
Who doesn't love chicken and biscuit?
Yeah, I think they do that.
Okay.
I'm hoping to, 4 bucks, 500 bucks?
Where are we getting the money? On? We'll tell that.
Okay. So I will start advertising it that way. Community meal info session at the Methodist Church.
That's what was September 7th.
Yes. And the full team could be there. I think those were the things I needed to ask you. I put one more memo in front of you, which is the next piece of information I wanted to start circulating. At the last planning commission meeting, Scott Bissett was expressing much more confidence in the project and said that some of his remaining questions revolve around the relationship with Swanton Village. If we build it, will we have adequate capacity to then support businesses? You know, what, what kind of a relationship will we have? So Wayne put this information together. It is from the study. He took the bullet, the, the important points out. So the thing to notice is that at some point, they say Village of Swanton has about 295 gallons per day capacity for wastewater treatment. And for water. It has 295, oh, that's wastewater, sorry. It says it up here. Yeah, no, that's water. 295,000 gallons per day available. And 51% of their wastewater is being used. So they had point 182 MGD, million gallons per day available. And then he's given you some examples. So for water flow, for 50 employees, only 750 gallons are needed. 100 employees, 2,000 gallons. And then a couple of different businesses, beer, manufacturer of beer is one of the highest uses of water and that's 4,500 gallons a day.
So there's plenty of capacity to build out, is what this is saying.
Yeah, yes.
For the park.
Yes, yeah, for the park and the airport. They both will be promoting businesses, so. So I'll be giving that to the planning commission on the 17th and circulating that and some of our other information. And Reg Belvo has agreed to come to the next meeting on the 19th, answer any questions, talk further. And Tim Smith will be at the planning commission meeting on the 17th. And he sent an email today. I had connected Scott Bissett, Richard Flint and Tim by email and said, you know, if your friends can't, you can't get your friends to come into a meeting, I think Tim has offered to meet with you. And Tim sent an email to them today and said, happy to meet you wherever you want, chat with your friends, so.
Why didn't tell them that you had done a hell of a job? Because some of the toughest opponents were reconsidering their opinions.
Yes, yep. And for him to just go out of his way to be available like that, he's been terrific. Terrific. We've been very well supported by everyone. So.
Okay. So outgoing flyers. Output balance.
Yep.
And if you have any spare time, we're trying to hit all of the committees. Question answered, period. So feel free, rent department, library, planning.
Tomorrow is the Village Core. That'd be a good one to hit. That's an older crowd, not really into social media and stuff. They're not picking up a lot of details. It'd be really good to be able to talk to them. And the library is fenced.
Yeah. Yeah, DBR and RAC is in.
Yeah, DRB is on the 12th, I believe. And I had asked them already and they said, no, thank you. So. Yeah, they said, no, we think we've got enough information. So I said, okay. So I, you know, if, if you can go and have it be, you're just there. And by the way, you want to share some information? Because they've already said no to me. So I think by them saying they, they already have enough information, I don't think they have any information.
That's the DRB.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't commit to anything yet. Kind of like this guy. Nice, regular words. Spree's in this.
Okay. Okay. Another check out.
Um, off topic, I just wanted you to know the test results came back for that garage on Frontage Road, and the garage was fine, but there was some broken pipe on the floor that had, I suppose, just, so you have to get rid of it. So I've called four consultants to get a bid. It should be very minor. It's just I think Better Sport probably would have looked the other way, but this one's. And when they went into the site, they noticed that someone had dumped a whole load of shingles near the entrance. So he said, do you want me to test those? And I said, no. No, God, what are we gonna do with those? Somebody just
Yeah.
went in and dumped them all there.
Yes, I mean, it's it's personal, don't bring it around.
Yes. So I should have, uh, some estimates for you by next meeting. Hopefully I'll have your last AOT contract and vote bids.
Yeah.
I've had some people call with questions, yeah. Two, three people called me, wanted to know more about it, so we shall see. Joe had said he thought Albert was interested, and they were gonna meet and decide on a number. So make a few bids.
I know they had. Well, those who were as interested as.
Oh. Okay. Well, there, I think you'll probably get a bid at least, so someone can end up owning it.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Anything else?
Well, it's an extra meeting.
Uh, yeah, it is, right. Free hours for these.
You're just lucky it wasn't like before when they went five or six hours.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Kyle?
I'm all set. I'm all set.
Okay. Thanks. I don't have anything for select board. I don't think we need executive.
Nice.
Okay. Kyle, go enjoy your hotel room.
Yeah.
Hurry on.
You still in Wisconsin? Uh, Syracuse tonight. Oh, okay. Syracuse this week. Yep, this week.
Like a nomad.
That's crazy.
Yeah, but you can look at it as a, a second honeymoon.
Yeah. Oh, you're a funny, funny girl, Sharon. Funny.
Gotta have some positives.
It's a honeymoon every day.
Very true.
A hundred percent.
You sound like a very lucky man, Kyle.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Ask my wife and she'll tell you.
Yeah. All right, call it, Kyle.
Make the motion to adjourn. I will second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.